Do you have sound and everything, Dan?
Yes, we should be good to go.
Good to go. It's 6:01, and I call the April 14, 2021 City of Wilsonville Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Cameron Mezba.
Here.
Ron Heberlin.
Here.
Jerry McGreenfield.
Here.
Olive Gatlicker. I see you, but we can't hear you, Olive.
Here.
Great, thank you. Jennifer Willard? And Aaron Woods?
Here.
And Brienne Tuzinski?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll all stand for the restoration of the Pledge of Allegiance, and the staff will lead us.
Dan, are we putting the flag up, or are we going without the flag?
Sorry, I went to the wrong room for the flag. Do we just decide it?
That's okay. It needs to be awkward. That's the Zoom way for these meetings, right?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to sign our vows of allegiance to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is a time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. Do we have any takers?
Dan, is there anyone in City Hall or on Zoom?
There is none.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Consideration of the minutes of the last meeting, in which I was in present, so I have nothing to say about it. Any corrections, additions, subtractions? It's fine as submitted? Very good. I guess it's approved as submitted. The next item on our agenda is middle housing work session. And Ms. Bates, do you want to speak to this item and pass it on to staff?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you, Chair Mezba and Commissioners. As Chair Mezba stated, my name is Miranda Bates. I'm Planning Director for the City of Wilsonville. I hope that you are all enjoying the beautiful sunshine that's out there this week and more to come this weekend. We only have one work session tonight, so we might be able to get out early and enjoy sort of the last setting of the sun. We'll do our best. I will keep my comments short. The team is here tonight on what you know is a very important topic. Middle housing in Wilsonville is both to implement House Bill 2001, our compliance with that state law, and also to implement some of the actions and policy objectives from the Equity Housing Strategic Plan that the city adopted in 2019. The team tonight, you'll see in the packet in your staff report and in the material they present tonight, not a whole lot of new concepts. These are concepts and issues and policy choices we've been talking to you about before. We've received some preliminary input from you, and we've done additional work. So the team has evolved those sort of policy choices and recommendations, and is here tonight to present to you kind of that further thought and get your further input on which direction we want to head on those items. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dan Polly, Planning Manager, who's the project manager for this, and he will introduce the rest of the team that's with him here tonight.
Thank you, Miranda, and good evening, everyone. So along with me from the consultant team, we have Joe Dills from Angelo Planning, as well as Kate Rogers and Andrew Parrish from Angelo, as well as Ben Weber from Sarah Architects. Really appreciate them all being here and helping out on this project. They're doing great work. So tonight, our agenda for this evening is to talk more about Frog Pond and then talk a bit more about Wooltown and a couple additional items. I wanted to point out that these, as talked about on the staff report, that these agenda items fall into what we're calling Category 3. So we've divided all the updates into four categories. So Category 1 and 2, which are things that, which are direct, came out of the audit, that really not much local flexibility, if at all, on. We'll bring those forward in future work sessions, as well as Category 4. Tonight, we're really focused emphasizing these Category 3 items. And I also wanted to emphasize that we're not really getting into deep into the details of the numbers and the final resolution of these, but rather seeking to tell the story of how we got to the recommended direction at this point, and then seek your confirmation of this direction to allow us to continue drafting and preparing for your further review and public consumption. So I also wanted to point out, I hope this page looks familiar to you. We continue to seek guidance through, on a number of the Category 3 updates from a survey, which--
Hey, Dan?
Yeah.
Are you trying to share something?
Really? I haven't shared it.
Not yet.
This is one of those nights. Thank you. Let me share it. Thank you, Ron. Okay. Well, nothing, no pretty pictures on the previous screen, so seems we're good. So this is the survey. I hope you've all seen it. If not, check out Let's Talk Wilsonville after the meeting. It's out there, and we've received over 70 responses, probably pushing around 80 at this point. And it's been really interesting to look at those, and we're forward to sharing those results and the impacts on the project with you at our next work session. So I also wanted to bring back this list we've seen quite a few times. It's the list of the project objectives and the desired outcomes. I want to reiterate that we focus on the recommendations that support these outcomes, and have really turned back to these over and over again as we've molded these recommendations. So with that, let's delve into the first topic, and that's the number of units in Frog Pond West. As a refresher, this really revolves around a requirement in the administrative rules implementing House Bill 2001 that new urban or master planned areas that were adopted before a certain date allow at least eight dwelling units per net acre in order to take advantage of certain allowances in the administrative rules to essentially keep the plan as close as possible to what it is today, or what was previously approved. So really, at this point, I want to turn it over then to Joe. Before I do that, I do want to mention that an important thing to keep in mind, those that were part of the Frog Pond process will recall, a framework of using sub-districts and defining number of units or density by sub-district was really key to the way it was developed. So we're going to be talking a lot about those sub-districts, the parts of those sub-districts tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe Dills from Angelo Planning.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Hello, Commissioners. Good to see you again. Let's go to the next slide, if we could, please. So there's a lot of information here, but we just wanted to show you that there is a process we go through to calculate how much capacity, zoned capacity, there is under the existing code, and how we get to the eight units per acre. So all of the lettering in white just shows you that there's a gross number of acres. We take out constraints like SROZ and wetlands. We then make accounts for parkland and take out the church site and committed sites right away and so on. So all of that gets us down to a net number. And our starting density is 6.43 dwelling units per acre. If we need to get to eight, and now I'm looking at the bottom, green highlighted, then our magic number is about 702 dwelling units of total zoned capacity. And that's a difference of 138 on top of what is coded today. Let's go to the next slide. So geographically, what lands are we talking about? The slide on the left, or the map on the left, is about the southern half of the Frog Pond master plan area. And what's colored in blue are the properties that have annexed. And the approved final plats are actually shown with streets and lot line work there. And you'll notice some bigger lots, mainly on the right-hand part of the map that have not developed yet. Those are the preliminary plat properties. So think of all of the annexed and land use approved properties shown on the left as the, quote, "committed land." Those properties are locked into existing development approvals. So on the right is the total master plan area, and we've drawn a blue line around the remaining properties that have not annexed or have not received land use approval. And that's basically the land supply that we're dealing with on the north half of the map. Okay? Let's go to, oh, and one more note on this. Dan mentioned the sub-district system that is used in Frog Pond. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, everywhere you see an area labeled as "sub-district," there is a line item in the code that says it's minimum and maximum allowed housing units. And this was the simplified method that was developed during the master planning process. Let's go to the next slide, please. So the questions we have for you deal with that map. The first one is, how do we achieve eight dwelling units per acre? I want to show you two methods for doing that. And then I want to move on to a little bit more of a policy direction of whether we should add code provisions that would be more directional and intentional about implementing middle housing, where we would require some portion of new development to include middle housing. And I'll say more about that in a moment. Next slide. Let's go through the two methods here. First, the adopted map. The little pie chart over on the left in gray. If you take that whole area that I showed you that is already annexed and has approvals, it adds up to 297 units. So in yellow is the remaining uncommitted amount of housing capacity that has been thought of to date in the master plan. And that's 267.
And Jennifer, if I can note just quickly, if I know, because I know some of our Commissioners have really sharp eyes, that this 267 doesn't line up with the number that's in the staff report. And we're aware of that, and we'll correct it as this continues to get refined. So just wanted to note that.
We're plus or minus a few units. One of the swings in this system is seven units that are allocated to the church property on the corner, which, as you may know, has some vacant ground and so on. So let's utilize these numbers and keep moving ahead. So method number one says, let's leave the map alone and meet our state requirement of eight units per acre by adding the allowance for additional middle housing type development in the undeveloped portion of the map. And when you do the math, that additional portion is shown in the bar chart. If you can look at kind of the Band-Aid color that shows 142 units. That was in the round number math. Remember, I mentioned 138, so pretty close to that. About that capacity gets us to the eight units per acre. An increment of 142 additional middle housing units would be allowed by the code. Would not be required, but would be allowed. Just as a reminder of what developers could build if they chose not to do any middle housing at all and just went with single-family, which they're allowed to do today, except for certain projects in the small lot sub-districts, they would build up to the capacity shown in yellow. So the 142 is additional density that would be coded. That's method one. Leave the map alone and deal with it through the code. The math, by the way, shows that that would add about 55% additional development capacity in the remaining areas, that northern portion of the map. That's a fairly high number, so what we did was, we did an alternative method here that I want to show you next. Method two would be to make some selective map changes. And the short way of saying this is that we basically take the undeveloped lands and bump them up one category. So the R7 goes to R5. We have a T-shaped property there that we've included as R5. And the R10 goes to R7. Uh, this was a little bit of a test method uh, that we wanted to do. What would it take? How much land do you need to redesignate? Um, and that's what it is geographically. But then you would still have to add in an allowance for middle housing that would bump the numbers even more. Um, so that's shown at the bottom, that about fifteen percent of R seven uh, would have to be required middle housing, excuse me, allowed middle housing. And about twenty-five percent uh, in the R five category would have to be middle housing allowance. That's up from the current ten percent requirement in R five. So I know it's a bit of a multi-layer cake here, um, but fundamentally, it's leave the map alone and increase the allowance, or make some map changes, and you still have to um, increase some of the allowance for middle housing in the second method. So, let's go to the next slide. I want to check in. So that, that's the conclusion. That's the end of the first unit. I think I, I should keep going on the slides here, Dan. Describe the second policy issue and then the, the Commission can talk about both um, together. Beyond getting to the eight units per acre, then the next question we'd like to put before you, that kind of builds on your, your discussions today, is should there be a um, a policy direction and code implementation that basically says we think that the remaining lands within Frog Pond should have some, a little more assurance of actually delivering some middle housing. And as you can see under today's code, um, the R five requires ten percent duplex. And that gets built as two-unit townhomes. And that's only on projects that are ten acres or greater. Because there's so little R five left, that's pretty modest. It's about four units. Um, so the concept here is, um, if the city wanted to take a step further than that, it might increase that R five requirement. It might expand it to the R seven and R ten lands. And you have to choose the middle housing types that would be added as allowed uses and, and likely remove the ten-acre threshold, um, again, towards the outcome of, of actually getting some uh, middle housing built throughout the area. So if you take that approach, I want to show you kind of the implications of that. Let's go to the next slide if we could. So here's a continuum. Think of this as sort of a slider bar of this uh, of this requirement concept. On the left is what you have today. Ten percent in the remaining small amount of R five gets you four units. On the right would be, I guess, a very extreme approach uh, where all of the additional middle housing uh, was required. And that would be another end of the spectrum. And of course, the slider bar is somewhere in between. We could set those numbers maybe ten percent, fifteen percent in R five, or twenty. Less in R seven, less in R ten. We'd have to work with how those formulas work. But somewhere in between, um, the, the master plan and the code could be adjusted to uh, require um, the implementation of middle housing as a spread approach throughout the remaining undeveloped lands. Okay? So I know that's a lot to drink in there. Um, let's see, our next slide, Dan, I think is a summary of the questions. So let me just rephrase the questions for you here. Number one is, how do we get, do you support reaching the eight DU per acre allowance through changing requirements without changing the map? Our staff analysis is uh, that that is the better of the two methods. Um, do you support that approach? And then secondly, do you support requiring some level, not defined yet, but some level of middle housing uh, through expanding the percentage provision? And if your answer is yes to that, then we would go back and work on it and find out where on the slider bar some options are for you. Okay? So Chair, that's, that's what we have on the, on the staff presentation for this, and I'll, I'll turn it over to you to guide discussion.
And I would, and I would add, let's spend, I mean, maybe ten minutes or less here, and if there's more, we might need to still save some conversation till the end. Uh, make sure we have time to get through the other topics as well.
Sounds good. Okay, anybody want, wants to start, or should I go around Robin?
Chair, I'll, I'll jump in if, if that's all right. So, so Joe, I wanted to make sure that, that I was clear on these two, these two items that you're looking for feedback on. So the first one is an allowance, not a requirement. So this is, development could occur, but does not have to occur. The second one is, we are requiring development to occur for middle housing.
And, and the two work in tandem. So the baseline is, we have to do something to get to eight units per acre. And we're suggesting that the allowance of middle housing is the method to do that. I would set a baseline. It wouldn't, it wouldn't require more than is required under the code today, but a developer could choose to. And then secondly, um, it's a second partner question of, do you want to adopt a requirement?
Yeah, and I would add, as a, as a reminder from our conversation last month, is really, we, we found, we talked to the developers that are active out here, there wasn't a lot of interest in middle housing. And that, you know, regardless of what option we chose to implement eight dwellings an acre, it probably wouldn't really lead to any much middle housing on the ground. So then, uh, there were, what we heard last time is there was general support of doing some type of requirement to actually support the goal of getting middle housing out here. So that's what this was built on, was that conversation.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I appreciate the clarification. Um, I'm, I'm okay with, with number one. I think number two requires a lot more discussion around what that would look like. Um, and, and what that, where that slider would be, um, especially given that, that what we're hearing from the developers is that this wouldn't happen unless it was forced. Um, and, and my, some of my hesitation, although I, I like the concept of requiring, none of this will require that it be affordable, just that it is a housing type. Um, and, and that's, I think, where, you know, maybe as a city, we have a larger problem with housing affordability. It within those diverse types and, and not as much just on the diverse types on their own.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Uh, a question for, for Dan Pauly. When you were talking to developers, did they say why there isn't uh, interest?
You know, what, what really came out in that conversation, some developers, I mean, out there, even in our market, and I had went through this more in the last staff report, is there's developers out in the market that are able and interested in doing this thing and create this kind of product in the region, but the developers are actually active, that are making offers on the land. I mean, they are, developers are focused on single-family as, as their product and kind of have that expectation going after this land as single-family land.
Well, that's, that's what my uh, uh, experience is, is that middle housing has its own developers, so to speak. Developers specialize in one kind of housing or another. And so you aren't going to have a single-family developer uh, jump in that because it's out of their, it's not their thing. So you would have to really attract that kind of a developer if you're interested in that. Uh, and we may not have uh, that in this neighborhood yet. It may not be on their radars, I guess is what I'm wondering. Uh, that was just a question. Thank you for the answer. Uh, Jerry, you want to go next?
Are there ways that the city can be proactive in uh, attracting developers to do this?
I think just awareness is more than anything. Um, because like I said, there are developers in the market that do this sort of thing. Uh, they're active in Wilsonville. Um, and also, I, you know, there's developed property owners that have talked to us, you know, outside of those meetings about their options too. So I mean, it's, it's on some of the property owners' radars as well.
If the city does decide to um, to impose requirements, um, how will, how developers respond to that who are already in there doing single-family?
There's a couple ways. I mean, some of the developers have actually built middle housing elsewhere. It's just not what they were planning here. Others haven't done a lot of it. Um, the, so they may choose to build it themselves, or the other option is they sell finished lots. Uh, maybe they build the single-family, then sell off some of the lots to a developer that does want to do middle housing. So that, that could be an approach as well. Because once they get their subdivision approvals, they can sell off the lots to another builder.
Is that it for you, uh, Jerry?
No, I have a, what is for me an important question. Um, the, uh, I'm trying to locate it. The um, in your conversation with the, with the state, um, did you say they indicated that duplexes cannot be counted toward allowed density? That strikes me as astonishing in the first place. I can, I can barely understand and not really um, like the, not, not counting ADUs in the density, but it doesn't make any sense to me at all that duplexes not be counted in density.
Am I missing something?
No, really, they're looking at them similarly to how they look at ADUs. And some of this is a shift in thinking. I mean, the, the state, as they, as they've done this, they've really looked at, I mean, all the definitions and some, some of the traditional understandings of these things have been kind of turned on their heads as they've crafted the regulations. So, um, it's really, duplexes are, you know, a duplex is considered the same as one, a two-unit duplex is considered the same as a single-family essentially under the rules and the law.
As I understand it, the difference is that duplexes share a lot and um, townhouses or, or um, attached have two houses, two lots. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, um, would we be forced as a, as a way around to subdivide some lots?
Allowing townhouses, and that's, that's a question.
To, to.
I mean, that's what we're proposing is to allow two and a townhouse in addition.
So converting what would ordinarily, what would, what would naturally be uh, duplex into a townhouse essentially, into two townhouses. But it, just to, to satisfy the technicality of the lot ownership.
Yeah, and I will say that on that specific technicality of what's that difference between a two-unit townhouse and a duplex, we have requested additional clarification from the state on that point as well, which they have not published and not backed to us yet.
Well, it makes a difference in terms of our achieving the density we're after and how we do it.
Jerry, it also may, um, a, a consideration may be that the state is trying to encourage middle housing. And they, density is just an aspect of how they're approaching it. They don't want an ocean of duplexes. They want middle housing. So they're discouraging duplexes at the same time. It's, it may be what their kind of logic is, like, except that duplexes are part of the definition. Uh, middle housing is, is kind of uh, more than just duplexes, if you.
Right, but it includes duplexes.
Yes. So, uh, Ms. Gallagher, do you want to go next? I, I'm sorry, are you done, Jerry?
Uh, I, this may not be the appropriate place to um, to say, but I, I've taken a couple of walks through um, Frog Pond West and uh, particularly through the neighborhood of, what's it called, Morgan Farm. And I know some very attractive duplexes have gone up there. And I can't imagine that anyone would have any objection to either being next to one or to being in one. I, I think they're, they're very fine-looking structures.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gallagher?
Um, in trying to sort out the last couple of weeks since our last meeting, uh, a question that keeps running around for me, and that is, um, I understand the concept of what is being, being enforced here or required by law. But last meeting, um, I think someone posed the question about twenty years from now, where would we be? Uh, which I thought was a really wonderful question. And I guess my question to, to you, Dan, would be, is this a zoning issue or is this a reality issue? In other words, if we if we make these choices about what is required or what will be allowed on a particular sub-district, is there a time factor of when things actually have to be built, or is it just a question of if someone wants to build again, then these are the rules of the road? Because I, I don't understand the difference. Am I making any sense?
I, I, I think I probably would. Let me, let me do a brief, a brief response and then uh, you can tell me if I'm.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I think there's two, both aspects of it. There's, and it depends, going back to uh, the desired outcome, some of it is compliance, right? And some of that compliance is really kind of a paperwork sort of thing in, in actual, um, in actual near-term or midterm and uh, results on the ground. Or it is something that the zoning code says, but doesn't actually have an effect on the ground. There are others of those, such as like this actually requiring during initial build-out that would have near-term impacts on the ground. Um, so it's a mix, honestly, at that point. I, I do want to emphasize that particularly when we're talking about like Frog Pond West, where there's, there's going to be more development in the coming years. There is uh, the initial build-outs, uh, and how that's impacted. But then there's a component that is, allows a lot more middle housing that would require redevelopment in twenty, thirty, forty years to implement, which is getting more kind of on the paper zoning aspect, not actual near-term reality.
So with the initial build-out then, on the northern area that isn't built yet, we're really saying it is going to be required that you build it a certain way?
Yeah, that's what, that is what number two is about, is actually requiring middle housing as part of that build-out.
And number one would not require them in the initial build-out, but with the intention of down the road?
It would allow it and the thought is some developers, it would, it could um, incentivize some developers to actually build it uh, during initial build-out. But what we're hearing from developers is it's not likely to have a drastic uh, impact on initial build-out.
Okay. So if I were, for instance, interested in purchasing a property that's going to be built in that area and the developer has decided to build a, a single-family home, but when I acquire that property, I learn that based on the zoning, if I would choose to do more building myself in the future, then I would have that, that would be allowed.
That's the zoned ability to do, yeah.
So it would be in a way, an added property value to, in the mind of some buyers who would say, gee, this is great. I don't need it right now. But if, you know, mom wants to come, live with us down the road, we could build blah, blah, blah on our property and it's zoned for that. Okay.
And I would just note that that will be true throughout the city.
Okay.
Because that's essentially the purpose of House Bill 2001 is that, um, that all those middle housing types will be allowed as sites redevelop over time.
On any single-family home, a single-home property in the future?
Yes, and then which middle housing types would be allowed would be dependent upon lot size and it meeting other design standards. So if you could fit a duplex on your lot and still meet your setback standards, et cetera, then you could anywhere within the city.
All right. So we really are talking about a zoning concept rather than an actual build-out in terms of initiating this proposition for the city. It's a rezoning initially? No? Yes?
It's a zoning code update, so it is a change to the zoning
Okay.
...regulations, which can affect what gets built on the ground. Because should you choose to require some middle housing, that's what would be built.
Okay, thank you.
The short-term trade-off seems to me to be whether or not we are going to be more efficient in the use of our land resource today, or wait 20, 30 years to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Essentially. So, are you done, Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Commissioner Tuzinski, you want to go next?
Sure. I guess my biggest question is going to be, if we decide to go ahead and require the building of middle housing in those areas that have essentially already been purchased by developers, I know some of them can do it, some of them might sell off, but how is that going to, through their eyes, are they going to want to come and develop in Wilsonville again with us? I mean, what are their feelings on that going forward, I guess?
I haven't asked them directly, I imagine. I mean, I think broadly, they understand this is happening throughout the state, and this is kind of the new reality that they live in, in the industry. I mean, they may be, and some of them, once they become aware of it, may, if they have issues with it, may push to come in with land use applications before the change is going to affect. That's a possibility too.
Okay. Okay, that's my line of question. I mean, obviously, I support allowing the zoning change, but how committed are we really to making the change on the ground is what it ultimately comes back to for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, you know, I think that when I look at the changing of the sub-district mapping, I'm not sure that's a good approach. I think, you know, reaching the eight dwelling units per acre through changing the requirements without changing the sub-district map, I think it's a better way to go, you know, from what I see and looking at this. So I'm okay with that. On the second one here, I'm a little bit concerned. I mean, middle housing, that's one of the objectives that we want to ensure that we have here. So when we look at that sliding bar and whether the level of middle housing that we are looking at, or I shouldn't say looking at, but considering, there are a number of things I think that come into play that have already been said. Will these builders want to build it? Well, I mean, Dan, you just said, you know, with the state requirements, I don't think that's a huge issue. Yeah, there may be some discomfort of not wanting to do it in the beginning, but I think they'll come around because it's a requirement. So for me, number two here on this level of middle housing, I think we're going to need to look at that with a little bit closer eye before we can really say, okay, this is where we're at. And I'm sure there will be a lot of discussion on that. So from my perspective there, I think that's where we're going to have to spend a little time to really understand all of the dynamics there. Because one of the other things too, is affordability here. And Jerry walked over to the Morgan Farms area there, and that whole area, of course, there is a very expensive area. So any kind of duplexes over there, I'm quite sure would be costly. So I just think this second piece here is going to take a little bit more time to really come up with the right approach. That's it.
Thank you. I am of the same mind. You have heard that from several commissioners. Yes to number one, number two requires work. We need to know what we're doing and what the impacts are. I'm not sure. I want to make sure that when people talk about affordability, it is not a word that is being confused with low-price housing. I think affordability in the context of this kind of a brand-new neighborhood development is going to be two-income professional starting families with young kids. That's affordable, because otherwise you're going to have houses that are much more expensive, and that's not going to be where that kind of a professional new family can start. It's not going to be subsidized affordable kind of housing. It's just, that is, I want to make sure that is not confused when we use the word affordability. This provides a good enough mix that you're going to have a mix of middle-class, upper-middle-class, and beyond income in this neighborhood, essentially. So I'm fine with number two, but we need to work out the details, as Commissioner Woods just mentioned. Now, that took much more than 10 minutes, Dan. Thanks for getting us started on a kind of a good, tight schedule.
All right. Well, we will try to keep going quickly while being thorough enough and keep us not here too late, and still allow us to go get some sunshine before the sun goes down.
Sun is setting as we speak.
Hurry, hurry.
All right. So the next, let's stay in Frog Pond West, let's talk about siting and design standards. This is somewhat interrelated, but we want to divide it. So going back to that sub-district idea, kind of what we've heard based on all the feedback we received is, you know, flexibility is good, and we want flexibility in terms of the types, but we want to make sure that we can make it fit into the look and feel that's consistent with the Frog Pond West master plan. You know, we've kind of decided that, okay, the two-unit townhouse, sounds like that can fit in, but how about these other middle housing types? Can we make, is it feasible to make them fit in? And so we really want to discuss that a bit more and kind of, essentially, we feel that it is, and that there's tools available in the tool chest to allow some of those types to fit in successfully. For starters, I mean, there is existing a Frog Pond West. There's an effective set of standards to control design and siting, and we want to align with those wherever possible. Two of those key standards in use today that would be permitted to continue include lot size, keeping kind of, which really has a direct relationship to the size of buildings when you start talking about setbacks and lot coverage and things like that. But also keeping units at two stories for most middle housing and one story for the cottage. So keeping the height similar to what's expected out there today is also something that can be done through all these housing types. With that, I will turn it over to Ben Weber with Sarah Architects to talk a bit more about siting and design. And then, I know we're getting a bit behind on time, so it's kind of in the context of the conversation. If you feel it's skippable, feel free to skip it.
All right. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, commissioners, for your time tonight. I will try to keep my word count down, and we'll dive into it here. The next slide, please. So as Dan mentioned, you have a pretty successful set of siting and design standards at play in Frog Pond West already, and those apply to, you know, a range of different housing types, including a few of the lower-middle types like duplexes or those two-unit townhomes. We're preparing some technical fixes for those in the background, and we're not going to really delve into those tonight, but just wanted to kind of remind you all of allowed uses in the zone today. We'll then jump ahead and can go to the next slide. We'll be dealing with each of those middle housing types, sort of in turn, and a couple of the specific options to those. With the duplexes and the two-unit townhomes, there isn't a whole lot to dive into tonight. We had already discussed, you know, how formally and appearance-wise duplex and two-unit can look exactly the same, just dealing with that issue of whether or not it's on a shared lot or has a lot line in between. Keep marching ahead here on the next slide. So triplexes and quadplexes are not allowed in Frog Pond West currently and aren't particularly common in Wilsonville overall. But we do think there are strategies that would allow triplexes and quadplexes to have a lot of similar characteristics stylistically in terms of bulk and mass to a single-family home. Let's caveat that and say maybe a larger single-family home. And so there are some strategies for standards, should you choose to allow them or permit them in Frog Pond at initial build-out, that can help really support their compatibility in the neighborhood. So the next slide, you know, should you choose to allow tri- and quad-units, there's that question of what standards would apply. A few of your existing standards certainly would, and those include window coverage and facade articulation, your prohibited materials list, and the ability to use the design menu options, you know, where you're picking five out of 16 different features to add interest and articulation and detail to the exterior buildings. All of those could apply to tries and quads. Now onto the next slide, sort of introducing a few other ideas to consider here. Thinking about driveways, which can be more impactful with properties that have more dwellings on them. There are a couple of controls you could consider, such as 32-foot maximum total width of driveways, you know, across an entire frontage. A rule about no more than 50% of your facade width being occupied by garages, and that one's already a standard that you use that could be rolled up to apply to triplexes and quadplexes. And then similarly, for any lots under 50 feet wide, you could require a four-foot recess of the garage from the facade or six feet from the front of the porch. So these are all techniques to try to reduce the visual impact, as well as the safety and sort of walkability impact of driveways and garages on the neighborhood, and just make sure that the building facade and aesthetics are dominated by those car-serving uses. On to the next slide. Another option that you could consider would be permitting triplex and quadplex only on corner lots during the initial build-out. Corner lots, because of their larger frontage on two different street faces and more flexibility for driveway and access options, can often be very conducive to these larger middle types in ways that in a mid-block location with only one street face, you know, might not be as suitable. And then finally, sort of relating back to the map discussion that Joe led, there are options to limit, you know, triplex and quadplex to only certain sub-districts in Frog Pond West. For example, you could limit it to the R5 small lot and R7 medium lot, which are the slightly more granular, you know, smaller and moderate-sized lots with a little more density and urbanity to it. Just generally, sub-districts, it might be a little more conducive to triplexes and quadplexes from a character standpoint. All right, marching through here, introducing the next type, so townhouses of three or more units. These are not currently allowed in Frog Pond West, although they are a fairly common new construction type around Wilsonville. Villebois be one example of that. In talking to developers, we've sort of discovered that, you know, these are potentially likely to be built if allowed, although we do need to be aware that they could result in larger, bulkier buildings, although there are methods to put controls on those, such as a two-story, 25-foot height limit with some of the parking rules that you can put in place. A reminder that, you know, we're still sort of discussing this as standards for townhouses, thinking about both the initial build-out, you know, would you permit them now and under what standards, but also future redevelopment, at which point, you know, these types of townhouses would have to be allowed, although that is decades away. So really, the only question we really want to bring to you on townhouses, and this is one of the active survey questions out there right now, so we'll be able to come back with more community feedback in a month. But that's the idea of should front-loaded garages for these three-plus-unit townhouses be required to be paired? So that essentially means, you know, each of two townhouses have to have their driveways right next to each other and sort of essentially function like one driveway. It's another technique to help reduce the impact of driveways and garages visually, create a bit more walkable environment, and, you know, the added bonus that it can help preserve space on-street for on-street parking. All right. And then getting to cottage clusters, you know, these currently are allowed in Frog Pond West and can include a wide variety of site and building designs, including, you know, single-level options, which are often recognized as pretty traditional for cottage clusters. It's sort of unknown at this point if there's a major developer appetite to construct these in Frog Pond West, but we certainly welcome your thoughts on the suitability of this type and, you know, your thoughts about these standards that would potentially be applied. So if you did choose to permit cottages, you know, more broadly, some of these are just state standards that would come into play, but they're worth mentioning because they are fairly significant. That includes lot size minimums that are relative to the single-dwelling lot size. So for example, no less than 7,000 square feet for the cottage cluster. You know, no maximum densities, and actually by definition must meet a minimum density of four units per acre and a maximum dwelling footprint of 900 square feet per unit. There's also rules about setbacks, you know, 10 feet around the entire perimeter, and a whole variety of model code standards for cottage clusters that could be implemented, everything from their orientation around a common courtyard to parking location and design, windows, pedestrian circulation, and so forth. So I think we go on to the next one here. So that essentially concludes, you know, the brief summary of standards that we're considering for Frog Pond West at the moment, and we want to put these two questions in front of you for discussion right now. And Dan maybe advises how much time you want to put on the timer here. Do you support maximizing the flexibility of middle housing types in each sub-district with design standards to help ensure the look and feel that is consistent with the master plan? And of these standards and, you know, any additional standards, which stand out to you as the most important?
Also note, I mean, we will bring, there are additional standards, again, that are part of the survey, such as like some of the architecture and how you group different units. So we're not talking about those tonight, but we will bring those back. But let's, again, try about 10 minutes, try to keep it as short as we can, because we still want to talk Old Town tonight. But let's again try about ten minutes, try to keep it as short as we can because we still want to talk Old Town tonight. So with that, I'll hand over to you, Joe.
Thank you. Let's start with Commissioner Woods. You're muted, Aaron.
Sorry about that. You know, when I, when I look at this and in really thinking about this here, I'm, I guess my concern is, one of my concerns is the expanding the different varieties that we're talking about here in middle housing. I mean, going beyond, I guess, just to net it out, duplexes for me and more or less the two-unit townhomes, I think we should stay to that particular design because it seems like the more we're adding, that we would add to this, that the density would be even more, but it would be more difficult in really working this. So from my perspective, I think that even though we want, I know middle housing, you know, development with more diversity, but I think if we stay with just the duplex and the two-unit type of development, I think it would be a lot better, that's what I'll say. I do have a question though concerning garages. Are these one-car garages or two?
Either.
So either, and what are the developers mostly building with? I can't tell from what you've shown.
It depends on the unit type. I mean, a lot of townhouses, you'd probably end up, depending on if it's alley-loaded, you might tend to see more double garages. A lot of townhouses we've seen built elsewhere are single. But if it's on a larger lot where, then it may be a two-car. So it really will vary, honestly.
Well, I ask that question because, you know, as you know, we all come back to this parking issue. And I mean, most houses have at least two cars. And so my concern here is for these particular middle housing types, the parking availability, the garage, you know, one car or one and a half car, I think that's going to be a real important piece here. But I just wanted some clarification on that, so thank you for that, Dan. So on the second piece here, the, you know, I'm not sure which additional standards I'll say that stand out more important, more so than what I've already mentioned. And as I think about it, when we're looking here at Frog Pond West and what's there, I would, from my standpoint, would stay with the duplexes and the two versus the triplex in the townhomes. So that's my feedback.
Thank you. Commissioner Tuzinski.
Yeah, I would somewhat agree with that, although I think as long as we're consistent with kind of the way things look and feel in the neighborhood, that a triplex or a cottage cluster could look and be attractive. Just like Commissioner Greenfield said in Morgan Farms, there's some duplexes that look very nice and sit in with the neighborhood, and I would just not want to have somebody stick a triplex in there that's totally different and doesn't feel like you're part of the community because your house is crazy different. I don't know. And for me, I guess some additional standards that stand out, I just, I probably need to know more about the cottage clusters just because it's still such a new idea. I know we've talked a lot about it, but just having the look and design for me is going to be what what I would want to know the most, just to see how they would fit in, I guess.
Is that a question for now or for?
No, that's a question for later.
Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Gallagher.
I'm okay with the flexibility. I think in order to achieve what we're trying to achieve, we're going to have to allow developers a little leeway and owners. Again, I agree that if we have very clear design standards, ensuring a particular look and feel, I'm okay with whatever it is.
Okay. And any additional standards that stand out to you? Sounds like they're all okay so long as they're helping innovation, is that what you're saying, Commissioner?
As long as they're what?
As they're helping innovation in design and in construction.
Well, you know, we've looked at a lot of different models, and again, I think, you know, there's an over, there should be an overall look and feel to the neighborhood if we're going to allow design things. And there are a lot of neighborhoods, very good neighborhoods in terms of quality of building that have standards. You know, you can only have a wall so high, you can only have shrubbery so high, you can only, you know, I don't have a problem, for instance, with a triplex on a corner. I think that's a smart thing, I think it's a good use of land. As long as, as long as the look and feel of the pitch of the roof, the materials that are used, as long as the look and feel is consistent, then I think, I think that we're protecting quality and allowing diversity, and I think that's important.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Greenfield.
I completely agree. On the narrow issue of, on the narrow question of cottage clusters, I live in a neighborhood that has two or three that come to mind, cottage, three dwelling cottage clusters, which fit in very nicely with the other cottage, virtually cottages, single-family cottages that are around them. One is hardly aware of the fact that you, that there is a cluster there when you're driving down the street until you actually are looking for an address, which I have done, and then have to find which of the three buildings there is the address I'm looking for. But the houses themselves are quite consistent with the structures on single lots around them and fit in quite well. I don't know how common this is in Wilsonville. I think that there are, there may be some in Charbonneau. I'm aware of some in other communities that I like rather much, actually. Seems to me that nine hundred square feet as a footprint is too limiting for a cottage. I'd like to see that a little bit more flexible, but I very much like the idea of the clusters. I do not like the idea of fourplexes, quadplexes. I think that a triplex, if it is well-done, and especially on a corner lot, could fit in very well. But the principle here is ensuring the look and feel consistent with what we have already approved. I'm acutely aware of the bargain essentially that we struck when we laid out Frog Pond West in the, in our master planning as a kind of compromise with the understanding that the other housing, more dense housing types would be accommodated in Frog Pond East, which we have yet to master plan. I think that we ought to stick with that, just as a matter of good faith with the community that we were negotiating with at the time. And I'd like to stay as much, as close as we can to the concept that we agreed to in Frog Pond West. And that means to me that we should encourage consistent look and feel among all of the dwellings, all of the buildings there, which is easy to do, very easy to do successfully with duplexes, as is evidenced in the examples that have already been built. It can be done with triplexes, I doubt it can be done with a quadplex.
Thank you. This bargain, as Commissioner Greenfield talks about, that was part of the master planning, is also something that I feel is important to stay sensitive to and true to. To me, density has gotten a bad name because in too many places it has been done with bad design. I think the solution to the problem, if there is a problem of density, is good design.
That's right.
And so I think to the extent that we can encourage design innovation and creativity, we should encourage it, especially when it is kind of honed and directed at maintaining the feel of the neighborhood and the texture and the quality and also the visual kind of density of it to the eye. And a lot of what is being presented here are very good solutions and tried and true solutions to addressing some of these issues, and I'm all in support of those. And I think even if we just stay with the lower end of the middle housing, good design is a must. So I would like to see design standards that are making sure that whatever we develop with these changes that we're talking about is high-quality.
Chairman Masbah, I'll jump in here.
Go ahead.
So I-
I forgot you, didn't I?
It's all right, it's okay. It's always good to go after you because I get more insights into, you know, well-planned designs and those types of things. So in general, I think I'm in agreement with Chairman Masbah and Commissioner Greenfield in terms of the general structure and maintaining the compromise that was Frog Pond West. You know, I, while I think that a four-unit quad or, you know, a larger set of row houses could fit in into the neighborhood if it's designed properly, I think it's a reasonable accommodation to limit, to not allow those and keep it in a little bit smaller bulk than what is feasible and would likely result in more middle housing. We're already halfway down the build-out of this neighborhood, so we need to be sensitive of that fact. And so outside of that, I think cottage clusters can be done reasonably. I think a, you know, a triplex can be done reasonably on a corner. I think it really does come down to making sure that we really do a good job of hashing out what those standards are and any of them can work from there. So I think number two for me, what additional standards stand out? None of them, they just need to work.
Excellent. Anybody else that I forgot?
Shall we jump to Old Town?
Jump to Old Town.
So for Old Town, you know, we mentioned before the concept that we were exploring of developing a new Old Town residential zone text. We floated that idea with the neighborhood, they seemed, they were open to it. And of course, we want to see what it actually says before we jump totally on board, which is understandable. But based on that feedback and feedback we've got from the commission and council of the day, that we are pressing forward with preparing an Old Town residential zone or a legislative rezone for most residential properties in Old Town as part of the project's adoption package. And you see a draft of what that may look like in your package. And really, to explain a bit more what it is, it's an adaptation of the R or residential zone, which is the other non-plan development residential zone that we have in the city. It bases, the zoning text bases the density on the existing comprehensive plan, which is consistent across all of the lots that be designated. It does not allow for multifamily, it only allows for the single-family middle housing. And the other significant thing is it allows for the application of the Old Town residential design standards to all these units, so all those existing standards. Because we heard clearly from the neighborhood, and it makes sense that, you know, they, there's been a lot of efforts to get to those design standards that were adopted a couple of years ago. A lot of, a lot of needs, a lot of thought by the neighbors and the community and decision-makers. And so they feel strongly that they want to stay true to those, to the standards that they have to the extent allowed under the law. So it's really keeping the design standards as is, except where necessary, such as allowing, you know, not being scalable by number of units. Plus a couple additions that the architectural teams were working with find advisable to kind of further what, and refine and further for middle housing what the existing standards establish. So with that, again, Ben, if you can keep it as short as possible, of course, but I'll turn it over to you to step us a bit more through the talk on Old Town and the design standards in particular.
Absolutely. So a few of those design standards that Dan mentioned are very thoughtfully considered and well-supported in the community and can remain, include these on-screen, including the forty percent lot coverage maximum for everything except cottage clusters, they have some of their own rules, the roof pitch requirements you have in place, and a prohibited materials list. This is just a small selection of those. Then on to the next slide. There are a few technical and feasibility fixes to be considered or that must be implemented, such as you must allow, you know, the twenty-five-feet and two-story height limit. And that's an update from Old Town's current use of a context-derived height limit. So that's one of the state rules coming to bear. And then we have some recommendations for adjustments to the minimum lot sizes. Three thousand square feet for a duplex, seven thousand for a quadplex, so on and so forth. Those are recommendations to help jumpstart a little bit of redevelopment in Old Town where feasible and just allow for more infill flexibility generally. Along with these minimum lot size area changes, we would of course have to look at some of the lot dimension changes as well. And that might include reducing minimum lot widths down from the sixty feet you have in place today. So that's sort of an arithmetic question we'll be working through.
And again, I'd reiterate, if I can bend it, on this, these technical fixes, we're talking what's shown despite our category one and two changes, we just wanted to provide it here for context.
Yes, yeah, we thought they were significant enough, if they're worth bringing up tonight, but are coming down the pipe. So to quickly work through a few of these, we recommend allowing detached plexes in Old Town. It can provide more site flexibility and result in built forms that are a little bit more akin to actually single-family homes. So it'd be like a collection of single-family homes on a single lot in a configuration like this. And we think that can help with the consistency and compatibility of middle housing types. This, of course, is in addition to attached plexes, which would naturally be allowed. Onto the next one here. This will be familiar from Frog Pond, but bringing that same rule for the thirty-two-foot total width of driveway- for the 32-foot total width of driveways and the garage, 50% facade width maximum. So, we think that's appropriate for many of the same reasons. And then a new one to consider here, a couple different rules that might allow you to put some controls on sort of the facade or the street presence of buildings, ensuring that the height and the width of them don't dominate the site or the street frontage. So, two techniques you could use would be to actually limit the facade width of a building to a raw number or a percentage of the lot width. You know, it could be 35 feet wide, or it could be 70% of the lot width. There's ways of regulating that, you know, in addition to setbacks, which are a common tool and would continue to exist. Another would be, you could restrict a building to have a maximum of two front-facing doors. That's a, you know, a rule you have in place right now, that of course applies to duplexes in Old Town. But you could take that same approach to some of the higher middle types. Continuing on here, these will be pretty familiar for cottage clusters. So, a lot of the same state requirements on lot sizes and minimum density and setbacks. We just wanted to point out that you can apply the Old Town residential design standards to cottage clusters wherever they would be applicable. You may, but are not required to limit cottage height to one story. And there's the whole variety of other model code design standards we mentioned previously that you can also apply, you know, about orientation and parking locations and so on and so forth. Alright, so that quickly brings us to the two key questions here. The first being, do you support the approach of a legislative rezone to the Old Town residential zone? And then, number two, do you support this general direction with Old Town design standards of essentially minimizing changes to the current standards as much as possible, you know, leveraging that good work from several years ago, and applying it as much as possible to these middle types that would be required in Old Town?
You?
Alright, thank you.
So, anything else from me at this point, Chair? So, I think this one should frankly go around a lot quicker, but so if you want to go around quickly to get feedback here, and then I can finish up with a couple other quick items.
Commissioner Heberline, you have five seconds.
Good on both, thank you.
Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes, on both.
Commissioner Greenfield?
Yes, on both.
Commissioner Woods? I don't see Aaron in my gam-
I muted again, yes, I was saying yes on both.
Commissioner Tuzinski?
Yes, on both.
Okay. Yes, on both, the thing that caught my attention is the maximum one-story for the cottage cluster. With the square footage being so small, I would have thought that one and a half-story, you know, the loft kind of design, would be actually a good, good solution for it. I don't know that it's, I know you want, you don't want this tall kind of small-footed tower-looking thing, but it seems like one-story, if it doesn't allow a one and a half or something, is a little too unnecessarily restrictive, but that was just my initial reaction. And I'm good on both of these.
Yeah, I live in a neighborhood in Canyon Creek Meadows, which has both, well, has single-story and two-story, and a lot of one and a half stories. And there really isn't a very distinct difference among those three. They all fit together very nicely the way that they're designed.
Thank you for that.
I happen to live in a one and a half.
And it works for you.
And it works very nicely. I actually have even room for an organ loft on the second story.
Excellent. Okay, Dan, you got it, you've got record time, Ben.
Thank you. So, this one, I think I understand what the commission's going to say here, but just want to confirm this. We heard even back on our original discussion of middle housing that there was kind of broad support for the flexibility of detached middle housing, which we've started calling cluster housing, rather than detached duplex and such. But we've had a part of it of outreach and input, through input from the outreach as well. And that has continued to support this idea of detached middle housing. And so, as we write the development code, really, the direction we're headed, and just want your confirmation on, is to broadly allow these detached middle housing units, the same as attached middle housing units, and that any requirement to be attached would be few and far between, if there's specific contexts that come up for issues. But the community really, I mean, they liked, a lot of the community likes to be detached, still having it detached, and if there can be more attainable and even clustered housing that is still detached, at some point, that would be something that'd be preferred by a lot of folks. And specifically going into, you know, Frog Pond, you know, that can, the compatibility and whether or not, you know, keeping some of the character could be supported, particularly in any middle housing required in the R10 large lot sub-districts to keep it, these detached-type units. So, just want your confirmation that you're supportive of broadly allowing that as we, as we develop the code standards.
Is anybody against, against this flexibility? You can speak up now if you are against it. I'm not hearing anybody objecting.
The next one is, it's kind of a technical one, but it's important. So, stepping back a bit, Senate Bill 1051, a few years back, required that the city, all cities allow an ADU on every lot that allows for a single-family detached unit. So, and we already had done that, but we also had already allowed it for what we historically called attached single-family, which now needs the definition of townhouse. So, the question's come up, what do we do about this allowance for ADUs with what's now called a townhouse, called into this townhouse category? So, the concept that we're really looking at would be to continue to allow, but only in instances where the lot size for that townhouse is consistent with the minimum lot size for the zoning district.
I'm trying to think of how you, where you could put an ADU on a townhouse-sized lot.
Well, I mean, you could convert a garage or something.
It could be internal to the structure, Jerry.
Yeah, you could do it internally, there's internal ADUs.
I suppose.
Well, but wouldn't converting the garage go afoul of the parking standards requirements?
As long as you still had one parking space, because ADUs don't require parking per state launch.
Yeah, but what about the house itself?
As long as you had, like in this picture here, as long as you had one parking space in the driveway or on the street, then it could be feasible.
Don't like it.
Heberline isn't convinced.
I don't, I don't like it either.
So, essentially, what I'm, what, what the proposal is, the picture where it shows, with the trees in the backyard and such, where it's kind of larger yards, that it would continue to allow for that type of townhouse, but would not allow for this type of townhouse that's shown, you know, the four, the four, the four-unit smaller picture on the slide.
So, Dan, are you saying there's some sort of lot size to building ratio that would need to be met for this to work?
It'd be, yeah, a threshold, a lot size threshold.
Okay.
Okay.
That would work. Anybody has any thoughts about this, other than those who have spoken up? Commissioner Tuzinski, Commissioner Gallagher, Commissioner Woods? Are you all good with this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it originally, though I was thinking along the lines of Commissioner Greenfield and Heberline, on, it didn't just, when I looked at it, it didn't seem like that was enough room, and you explained it so that it could be. So, I'm okay with that.
Well, that is all that we have, unless there's other questions or comments that the, that the commission had. They go a bit over time, but I think you're still all awake, so that's good.
You did fine, you did fine. Anybody has any additional comments before we wrap this portion of the meeting up?
Thank you, team. Well done, gentlemen.
Very nice. Also, thought-stimulating kind of conversation. Next item, I'll give it back to Director Bechel to lead us through the informational. Any, anything you want to add to what was in our packet?
No, I don't have anything to add at this time, unless anybody has any questions.
I noted that the council looked at the bylaws for the Equity and Inclusion Committee. Are you getting a lot of applications on that?
Um, yeah, actually, I can report that I am on the review committee of applications. So, there are a couple of community members and a couple of staff members who are reviewing those applications. We received 44 applications.
Forty-four?
Yes. So, we're pretty excited that there is a lot of interest in the community, and I am so honored and humbled to be able to review the applications. You have heard me say this before, because you all are amazing volunteers who commit your time to serving your community. And each time we have one of ours graduate from the Planning Commission, I typically wax on about that for a few minutes. And, you know, it's no surprise to see the amazing people who live in Wolfville every day that, you know, I often don't get to meet, and it's just been an honor to review all of the applications and get to know more people in this community, and be reminded of just the special people who live here and that are around us every day. So, it's, it'll be really exciting to see that committee take shape.
Commissioners, do you have any questions from Ms. Bechel? On any subject other than the ones already covered? Our work program for the coming weeks have come up. We're going to be in middle housing next meeting as well, it seems like. And Town Center, Streetscape is coming back. And what I always look forward to, the annual housing report comes, that's always my favorite.
Yes, we are excited to get that one to you. It will be a little later than usual. We, particularly because of the winter storm event, as you know. I know it seems completely unrelated, but as you know, with the community was impacted very, our urban tree canopy was impacted significantly. And we've had to, Planning has responded as one of the leads on responding to, both the immediate response to the trees and to residents, but also in the long-term efforts for reforestation of our trees, particularly street trees, but beyond that. And so, we have had a lot of applications. I think we have now over 70 application, tree applications that came in since that event. We know that there are other neighborhoods that have not submitted applications yet. And the planner, who normally does the housing report, has been processing basically about 10 times as many tree permits in the last six weeks than usual. So, so we are being patient, and she will be doing an excellent job, as you know, in pulling together a great summary for the past year on our housing report.
Wonderful. I don't have anything else. Anybody else have okay, Commissioner Greenfield?
Is there any update that is appropriate for public consumption on the developments in the former Xerox property?
Well, we had a development application that went to the Development Review Board for Twist Bioscience, and there have been news articles about that company, if you're interested. Is there, I don't think there's anything else. Dan, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, we're having active inquiries, inquiries, but nothing else that I think we're ready to share.
I understand. I walk that frequently, even though it's posted, no trespassing. The whole neighborhood seems to be-
We're good to tell, Jerry, we're good to tell.
I think it's widely disregarded, as I see frisbee games going on, and kite flying going on, and people picnicking on the lawn and so forth. It's a lovely, lovely park, and I wish that the city somehow could effect that into a park. But a- as it is, it's a fine resource, it's rather latent at this point. But I see a lot of activity there, including a lot of what appears to be basic infrastructure improvement on the rooftops of the large buildings, and I'm just wondering what that's appropriation for. Probably you can't answer, but I'm, I'm eager to see what develops.
Or maybe those are observation decks to keep an eye on trespassers.
I am very disheartened, I was very disheartened to see, I counted six large trees, oaks, I think all of them oaks, that were down from the storm. Some of them tipped over roots up, and others destroyed beyond salvation. And they have gradually been harvested, it appears, I think informally, but some large, as large as three-foot diameter oak logs have been carted out of there, now becoming furniture, I suppose. But altogether, the whole property has had a severe loss of its charm.
I don't know about charm, my charm has had a lot of tree damage as well.
Well, I think that Parkway Woods did, it still does have charm. It needs to be cleaned up to maximize what's still there. But it was such a shame to see so many, in effect, heritage trees down or severely damaged.
Well, I'll stay away from incriminating myself on any private property infractions, but any, any movement around the Friars' property, Miranda?
We did have a pre-op recently on the property by folks who have an option to do due diligence at this time.
Very well said.
Hopeful about that, too.
I admire someone who can say something and say absolutely nothing. Well done.
There is a graduate degree for that, and it's called planning.
There's interest, that's what I got out of it. I'm okay with that for now. Hopefully, it's good interest, that's my concern.
And she's not telling.
Very good. If there isn't anything else, we are ready for a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn?
At 7:38, was that seconded?
Oh, seconded.
Very good, we have second, third, and fourth and fifth. And it's now 7:39, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.